I'm good.
No, that is your team. I should. It's mine.
So we'll go ahead and get started. It's a communications committee meeting today. It is currently 1:30 PM on August 29th. And if we could start with introductions, let's start with MJ and Kev.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. My name's MJ with ASD.
I'm Jacob, board member.
Sean Prince, senior director of teaching learning secondary.
Tony Riley, senior director of diversity, equity, inclusion, and community engagement.
You're right.
Andy Rattler, chief financial officer.
Frank Gassitson, chief academic officer.
Mary Cassel, executive assistant.
Kristen Johnson, deputy chief of the schools.
Kelly Lefton, board member.
Dora Wilson, board member. We have also Cory Ace in the room. Thank you, Cory. And do we have anybody online?
Yes, President Collin and board member Bellamy.
Awesome. Thank you. So let's go ahead and run through our agenda, starting with our communications update. MJ, I'm with you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, member Wilsons. So just want to update the committee that we launched our back-to-school messaging. And our theme this year was gear up for success. We built off of what we started a few years ago. This year, we leaned into kind of where we were with academies and that pathway. And created a new flyer this year that we wanted to really make a little bit more user-friendly. And really help families develop a good sort of checklist. And so we came up with the theme of gear up for success. And created a trifold that we sent out to families and really became a checklist for those families to kind of go through. Really highlighted different areas that the district has been working on for the launch of the back-to-school. Given the number of new initiatives that the district was launching this school year, we did a follow-up mailer. And we were able to get those translated into a few languages to directly connect with families that English is their second language. And so that was a focus on school start times and the staggered start times approach, which has been very, very successful in Bartlett. And the superintendent was pretty pleased with that. And then we launched it district-wide, which was a very successful launch and pretty solid for students. And so that flyer went out as a follow-up to our gear up for success checklist. And then that was in addition to the billboards that you saw around the district locations. We had digital buys on social. And we also had support from KTUU and KYES this year. We did a second year with Arian, their morning edition anchor, and really focused in on those tips. It really was a play-off of our checklist. And so got lots of good feedback, pros and cons, and good takeaways for where we want to go for next year. But the overall consensus is that the gear up for success theme was successful in terms of families and their needs. And we're going to continue that next year. So our primary focus outside of day-to-day operations with the district will be the right sizing ASD project along with attendance matters. We'll kick that off again starting next month. And then the other projects as well, which is our academies of Anchorage, which we will be funneling a lot more focused this year now that we launched Freshman Academy. So that was a quick skim with our back-to-school launch and excited for this upcoming school year.
It's a lot. You guys are doing great work. Thanks. Does anybody have any comments?
Appreciate the update. And I'm a frequent follower and liker over social media. I think I'm tapped as a thing. So earning that status. I am grateful for things like the videos that give a window in our buildings. Really am hearing positive feedback about that. With all that said, thank you. I don't, this is the best agenda I can bring up, but I want to flag it for the committee's attention. I'm thinking ahead to the legislative luncheon, which I think communication staff, or at least are traditionally able to plan it because we are not expert planners of the board level meetings or luncheon. I'm thinking through ways to, not throughout the playbook, but to make them more effective. And one of the ways I was thinking about doing that, I recognize this is unique and probably hasn't been done before, is having that event earlier in the calendar year, potentially before the November election. And opening that up to anyone who is, is interested in running for office or might be running for office. The event always has a political component to it because the folks who show up when the event is held in December are elected and are politicians. So I don't think we're breaking the barrier of politics involved in events. I'm thinking through every year I've been on the board, I think attendance has been, if it's not grown sparser, it's getting pretty close. I also think, well, the event is super insightful for those who choose to attend. It's a lot of work that goes into something that I'd like as many folks present at as possible. And I also think educating folks who are clearly interested in becoming engaged in public policy, specifically in education, via the run for office might benefit from having factual information from the district. And so throwing that out, throwing that out is something to consider at the district level. Sort of in a direction or anything, but just a brainstorm, or if I don't do things a little bit differently.
Oh, sorry. Member Bellamy, member Bellamy, thank you for the lessons. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. MJ, thanks for that report. I also want to just echo Carl with the legislative stuff. And I'm not sure how, how much, how soon or how earlier we can do it. December has worked, but maybe we want to look at November. I don't know, but I'll leave that up to the group. But I think, because we kind of know, we can kind of read the tea leaves as to what's going to, what we're going to be facing. So I think if we can get a, probably a quicker start, or I don't know. Because I don't, I don't know that we can keep up with all the divergent kinds of thoughts. But I do want to thank communications for, I love the ASD Live, that new edition. I love it. I also love the meeting recaps. I'm kind of getting comfortable with SharePoint. Basically, I, I'm going to admit, I literally copy the recap and send them to every one of my, my community councils. It saves me the work of doing a, an individual report like I did for the last three years. So I do appreciate that. And so, and I, and I think the, having everything in that SharePoint space really helps me. Even though I'm not techno-savvy, it just helps me know where to go look for stuff. Like I just watched Dr. Bryant's welcome back message. And, and last night, while I was kind of surfing through. But, so anyway, I just want to thank the department for its work. And I don't know how the board can assist you more, or give you, or make it easier for you to handle a district this size with all of the information that's coming out and going forth. But if there is something we can do, please do not hesitate to let the chair know and we'll be on it. Thank you.
A general comment, I think that the work that the conference room is, is really beautiful. Whatever the topic, the videography is lovely. Soundtracks are nicely put together. It means always a compelling narrative, whatever the subject is. So I think that work has been really fantastic. I'm not sure about SharePoint. I'm also 20 years behind and appreciate long-form essays, generally speaking. But I just wanted to share that from a personal standpoint, I got the checklist as a parent in, you know, in the mailbox. And I thought, oh, there's a lot of information there. I can't deal with it. I'm going to recycle it. It was just a little too much for me all at once. So that was just, that was just one personal thing to do. But a good job putting it all together. I'm sure it was very valuable for the other families.
Did you get the one?
I got both messages. I got those. I got a couple of things in the mailbox.
Did you get the flyer from a few years ago when we launched Dr. Bryant?
I don't remember that.
It was pretty dense.
It was even dense. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So the goal was to thin it out.
Okay. Well, they had lots of relevant information, more than I was ready for at the time.
Okay, good. Yeah, thanks.
I want to say thank you for the intentional effort to publish things in multiple languages. And so that, I know that translation takes a lot of effort and a lot of work, but I think it's well worth it for our families. So thank you for that effort. Appreciate that.
Yeah, well, for the translators, so working with Tony's team and Bobby's team. You know, we really started a few years ago to really try to do a better job at meeting our families who where English is their second language. And so we just happened to break through with this flyer. We weren't able to do it with the back-to-school one. But we were able to figure out how to create a mailing list for the families who speak those specific languages. And so our goal this year is to do more of that. So, you know, when we do, you know, like, for example, with the surveys that we put out, we've got them translated. But we actually now have figured out, like, we can produce a mailer and really direct mail to those families for that. So it's just another way to just get down there and do it. So just working with Tony's team to be able to provide that support for those families. I do want to say just to the folks that don't know what Inside ASD is, who are listening, or who will watch this recording later, which we know they do. Inside ASD is internal communications. And so what President Bellamy, which with, member Bellamy was talking about. We launched a live platform opportunity just for staff called Inside ASD Live. And that was, we launched that actually two weeks ago. We got, we're doing our second launch tomorrow with Sven and Kirsten. And that is to really honor the feedback that we got from staff a few years ago of just not feeling as connected to the district mission as they would like. And so this just was an idea to better inform them, better, better connectivity. And so it's something brand new that we're trying, and it's really going to be focused on those hot topics that the district is focused on. That staff need to know and would like to know. And so we're launching our second one tomorrow. But that's what that is. It's not a public communication. It's just for our staff. As we continue to make internal communications a priority for this year and in the next several years to really tighten up that communication portal for, for staff. So I just want to make that clarification that that is not something that the public will be having access to. This is just for our staff.
And do they access, is it online? Like?
Yeah, we send it out. It's through SharePoint. And, which is, which is a fantastic platform that really has a lot of cool features that we are starting to uncover. It's just like an onion. But if anybody on the school board would like a training on SharePoint, we're happy to set that up for you. It's a successful platform and there's going to be some more things to come from that. So if you're interested in learning more, we can do a training.
I meant before I, with English, I need a brief moment speaking. I wanted to express my support from Richard's idea about moving legislative luncheon, maybe not to November, because I think the intention is to put it into something more like October. And if times, I mean, doesn't save a lot of shelf-stable lunches that are ready to go at a moment's notice that we can serve legislative candidates. In addition to the culinary talents of PKAC students, but having brought shelf-stable lunches down to Juneau before, I do think that they were an effective means of communication.
So, Dr. Bryant, do you have any comments about possibly moving legislative luncheon? Or is that something you want to think about, or?
Yeah, I'm curious to get Heather Brakes' perspective. But I think on the surface level, I'm interested by the idea because I would assume if we do it prior to the election, there might be more engagement. And just more of an inch of questioning. We've done a great job in the past couple of years, but it's the same folks and I'd love to widen the tent. So if that's the most appropriate way, I'll support it. My only issue would really be for the staff, is it possible to pull up a luncheon in October with a program to be reimagined?
It's why shelf-stable lunches could be useful.
So cheese it's. No cheese it's.
If you could maybe ask and follow up, that would be awesome. So I would support that as well. So that's something other board members would support. But I would like the opportunity for her to hear, if it's feasible for our staff first. Any other comments, questions about our communications update? Let's move on to community engagement update.
Okay, so I provided the community engagement update, which, like last year, just goes through where we'll be in ASD over the next month. We're kicking off, we've been doing some summer events, but we're kicking off this weekend with the National Black Business Month at UAA. So we will be at that event. And we have some other open houses that we are attending and some other committees that we are sitting on within the community. So this will be a growing list of events. I also just want to provide an update on where we were at with the helping us give school supplies or hugs event. So we are almost back to our pre-pandemic levels of serving our families. You'll see that we ended up serving actually about over 3,100 students. So, and then of the families served, we served over 1,100 students. So this is something that we're already planning for, for next year. We incorporated a lot of new things this year. For example, we had our vendor booths, which included a lot of focus on registration for ASD. So really working on getting registration done earlier, but also just having some other access to resources that ASD offers. And that was something that we got a lot of feedback on. We had the local colleges there as well. And we got a lot of feedback. People were excited to be there and be involved and really excited about the amount of families that they talked to. So planning for this for next year is already in the works. And that is something that I'll continue to update you on. And I've also provided the native advisory committee schedule for this year. MECAC and SEAC, the Special Education Committee, are working on finalizing their schedules for the year. And then we'll be able to get out kind of a draft calendar for you to look at in terms of when we will be presenting to the board. So we can make sure that we'll be there in the fall and the spring to give you an update on what each of the committees will be focused on for this year. Aside from what's on the sheet, also working with the communications team on the right sizing project. Yesterday, we worked on a new video message for the community. So one thing that we consistently heard is that we do surveys and people don't necessarily know the outcome or what is, what's happening with it. So yesterday, we recorded a message with Jim Anderson, our COO, on the results of the first right sizing survey. So you'll see that posted. It's just a short digestible video for the community to understand what the results of that survey were. And kind of some more information on the right sizing project and what they can expect.
Can we post it to the right sizing page? Yes. I, I've appreciated having like the FY25, you know, budget hub and, you know, hot topics pages.
Right. So we're going to have it. We did it as a video so that we can do that in multiple ways, so that it can be posted on the website, possibly in different formats, posted on social media, depending on how much we can develop. The goal of that is for like future communications that we can continue pushing people to that website. Because we're starting to expand it as we move forward with the project with FAQs and other things. So.
I want to dial it back a little bit because I was going to say thank you to the communications team for all the effort on the video message. That has been amazing. I think that's been very helpful. When people are overwhelmed with too much information, it's nice to get the snippets and videos and that, that communication. I think, appreciate that. I had one question. Do we know how many students were registered at the backpack event? You said that there was an opportunity to register.
So our registration process is, a lot of it is, is kind of making sure that they know where our apps are and getting signed up originally, like through queues. They're not necessarily going to come ready and prepared with the documents that they need for registration. But a lot of it was getting set up. We had actual computers and staff there. So a lot of it was getting them set up in their parent connect portals. So then all they had to do was go show the documents. So it just kind of streamlined registration and it was helpful. But it also was helpful for getting a student signed up for like free and reduced lunch. So we got to catch families. And so they could know earlier about the services that were available instead of being overwhelmed by all that information that comes home the first couple of weeks.
Awesome. That's great. Does anybody online have any questions, comments? No? Anybody else at the table? No. Thanks for the update. I really appreciate knowing what the district is doing in the community. I think that's, that's fairly impressive. I knew we were doing a lot of impressive stuff, so I like to highlight it. So that's awesome. So we'll go ahead and move on. The academies of Anchorage is an update that I wanted to put on our agenda. So that, I know there's a lot of work being put into the academies, a lot of changes as they go. So I wanted to consistently provide that update in our communications committee meeting. And so would my ability to, or?
So I can start. So just for awareness for the board, Sean and Sean Prince has filled a senior director job for teaching learning this year. And I transitioned to deputy chief of schools. So we're working on this collaboratively right now and slowly transitioning a leader to Sean as, as we kind of go into the first quarter. So by second quarter, he's going to know it all, right?
Absolutely, all of it.
Anyways, so I'll start us off and then Sean is going to chime in as well. The summer has been extremely busy. Lots of work has been put in to the academies of Anchorage work. It's been really good work. And lots of real positive things that we're excited to share today. But I'm going to turn it over to Sean so he can kind of walk through all of our updates.
So, Eric, did you have the slide deck? I've just shared it with you just in case.
Thank you. Have not received it yet.
Your copy isn't. Oh, sorry. I missed that. There we go. Really hoping to do is to just kind of bring you up to date. We went kind of back in time to encapsulate all the things that we've done with the academies of Anchorage. We're going to begin just with our freshman academy preparation and launch. There was a ton of work that was put into launching our freshman academies and doing that right. That means that we had staggered starts at all of our comprehensive high schools. We have reached out to our staff who put on that event. We've asked for student feedback. And it's been overwhelmingly positive. The staggered start where you actually build that sense of belonging with students really kind of comes a long way. I know we've been doing that at one comprehensive high school for over the last seven years. And it's always been this kind of cyclical event where you welcome in your freshmen, you gather all of them. And then you have juniors and seniors who are a part of the school, who actually mentor and welcome them as part of that opening staggered start. And that actually just builds on itself. Because in two years, you're going to have freshmen who have that experience entering the ranks as juniors. And they want to give back to the communities that they love and care about so much. So that's how we really see that freshman academy stagger start really building that support. And then when we're talking about career exploration, if we're going to go ahead to the next slide. We're, we had the master plan that was adopted with the amendment on June 4th. And then we had feedback from Forward Next Generation Learning on our master plan. And we've, we're set to actually go, if you go to the next slide, we have our celebration and designation ceremony that's going to be on September 25th at the Alaska Aviation Museum. We're going to have about 200 to 230 stakeholders with a student-themed element welcoming that designation by the Forward Next Generation Learning. When we actually get designated as one of their national sites. And.
And the board's invited to attend that as well. And so I believe America has that invitation that she's going to share with you soon.
Just clarification, on the left it says September 24th, on the right it says September 25th.
Oh, yeah. It's the 25th.
It's the 25th. Yeah. We can make that correction. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks for catching that. So the designation ceremony is a celebration put on by the district, but. So the designation ceremony is a celebration put on by the district, but the CEO of Forward Next Generation Learning community will be here to present the designation plaque, if you will, to the district. We'd really appreciate the board being there if they're able to make it. The superintendent will be there. I will be there. Many of us that have worked on the project will be there along with community members, all of our steering committee, main players will be in attendance as well. So it, it should be an exciting time and we'll get to highlight kind of the milestone we've been achieved.
It's also a great opportunity for us to, to say thank you. There's going to be a number of awards for all the stakeholders in the municipality of Anchorage that have really helped uplift the Academies of Anchorage work. And we're going to have an opportunity to present them with individual awards for their contributions. We also want to go to the next slide if we can to, to look at the professional development that we've done for a lot of our teachers. We started off the beginning of this school year with a distributed leadership training for all of the administrative staff in the comprehensive high schools. We've done interdisciplinary academy teaming for all of our freshman teams that are, this was prior to the beginning of teachers returning on their regular contracts. So that we could actually make sure they felt prepared to teach a lot of these career exploration classes this year. And then we have freshman academy support sessions that we have open available for office hours if there's questions and ongoing trainings. We also meet with our freshman academy principals bi-weekly to do updates, field questions, understand supports. And then we also have weekly freshman academy coaches meetings. Member lessons?
I have two questions.
Okay.
Maybe I should give the answer to both of them. What does distributed leadership mean? And who are freshman academy principals? Are they the building principals? No, they're a separate principal.
No, they're an assistant principal.
Okay, so it's an assistant principal who's been renamed a freshman academy principal?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And, and some of our freshman academy assistant principals are supported by their.
Yes, right. So. And then what is distributed leadership? What does that mean?
So distributed leadership, it brings like that freshman academy assistant principal, the principal together, some of the teacher leaders in the building together. And it's really about kind of reimagining how they communicate as a team, how they team together. Because it's a different model. So it's really working through like, how do they communicate with each other? What's their meeting structure? Like, how are they going to include stakeholders, all those things? So it's really about the teaming aspect of, of the transformation and supporting them. So.
It really takes a deep dive into how freshman academy teams work. Because typically they're not done at high schools like they are at middle schools. Middle school models always had a lot of teaming organization. Whereas in high schools with freshman academies, it really takes that, you know, wraparound support for students. And they're really just trying to make sure that all the alignment in the school focuses on the students in need. Because as we found through a lot of studies, that if you have freshmen who fail one class, they have a 30% chance not to graduate on time. If they fail two, it's over 50% not going to graduate. And those are just staggering statistics that we're trying to overcome with the use of freshman academies.
Yeah, it's really about building high capacity.
So the next slide. Partnership updates. We've been flooded with enthusiastic partners from the community. Right now, we have about 76 community partners that are reaching out to engage with us. As far as the career expo on October 4th, we have 72 confirmed community partners that are going to do presentations for our freshmen. We have, as mentioned in other meetings, we have large local companies expressing named academy sponsorships. And we actually have a tactic team that is formalizing our process. When we were working through Forward Next Generation Learning, they said that named academy sponsorship probably doesn't happen until your second or third year of standing up the academies. And we're there right now with people who are very interested in becoming named partners and supporting this work. If you go to the, the next big hurdle that we're going to be looking at is the scheduling tactic team to talk about the proposed schedule recommendations for the 25, 26 school year. We have our first meeting today. It's, it's myself and senior director Eric Backman, who are the co-chairs for this tactic team. We're going to bring in the eight comprehensive high schools and AEA representation for this meeting. So it's actually this afternoon. We're going to start talking about various proposals that we could have for a schedule for next year. Member lessons?
So a parent in ASD has reached out and made a Facebook page and shared that the Academies of Nashville are pivoting from an eight sketch, an eight course schedule to a seven. So is that going to be an item of discussion at all in your meeting?
We're.
I guess as you're exploring different options.
Right, we're, we're looking like, I know that when we started to look at standing up the Academies of Anchorage, we actually went to Akron, we went to Chicago, we went to Nashville. So Nashville might be making that pivot, but we're actually just exploring all workable things that'll be beneficial to Anchorage.
Okay. And is there a time when a recommendation is going to be brought to the board yet?
No, we're, we're, the timeline that we have right now is we're starting our meetings today. And we're hoping to have a recommendation by November.
So our goal is to give the board ample time for the budgeting process to have a conversation.
And then October 4th is our career expo. And this is where we see tremendous support from the municipality of Anchorage. They donated the space to ASD to hold this event. And we have coordinated how we're going to have visits for all of the A comprehensive high schools coming in. And as we said, 72 different community partners to date have signed on to do presentations to really engage our students in what is available here in Alaska for jobs and career opportunities.
And the event's going to be highly interactive, so it'll be a fun event for 14-year-olds to, to explore. Just, it's not going to be like a sit and get event. Like they'll be active, moving around space. There'll be participating activities, listening to, you know, different kinds of professionals talk about what they do. So it will be really a good fun event for them.
October 4th.
Are all eight high schools going to be there at the same time? Because that would be a lot of kids.
No, we have, we have shifted rotations of bus schedules and the municipality is actually quarter off some streets. So our buses are going to be able to stop right in front of the Denia Center, let our students off, board and pass buses, and the schedules have already been distributed. We've been working with principals since July on the bus routing and special accommodations for students with special needs. Any of those things have, have been really kind of worked out fine too. So pretty excited about that.
Do you know, how long do kids get at the expo with the scheduled?
We're going to give about 70 minutes. So just over an hour, which is about the tension span of those ninth graders.
Does that include to and from the buses or separate from to and from the buses?
No, like, once you're in the expo, we're figuring about 70 minutes. So we've cycled them out to get them back on the buses and back to school.
I appreciate that municipality stepping in.
It's you.
That's amazing.
Yeah, they've, they've got a really great partner in this side.
So the industry councils, we're, we're still in the process to make sure that we can set up them well. And we're hoping to make sure that we have mapped out industry pathways and CT programs and study so that we can be ready for the next level of some communication coming out.
Does anybody have any questions, comments for the team? Anybody online? After being online and knowing it's hard to see.
Yeah, I told her that I was going to sit in front of the chair.
No, I appreciate the, the update. That's, that's some amazing work. I'm excited to, to see how the career expo goes. Just be in that. So be there for that. That's awesome.
Yeah, and you should get an official invitation to the designation event soon through your board email.
And, and is that going out to all of the community partners that participated in the community?
It is. We, we really looked at those community invite lists and we, most of our active tactic team members and our active participants of community committees have been extended invitation. The date just went out today.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions? No, I won't say suggestions. Okay, I think we are, do we?
Make a motion.
Do you need to make a motion today?
I, should I just adjourn?
You could just adjourn.
Oh, perfect. We'll just adjourn.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.